Yeah, you took the message. Organic kind of way.
Yeah, like I really, yeah, I really liked that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's all yours.
Yeah.
Yeah, for about six minutes.
Oh, just that you have one at the end of the day.
Just don't know where they're gonna sit yet.
Yeah.
Good morning. Before we get started, please turn off your cellphones or use the etiquette feature. Today's hearing is being livestreamed on YouTube as part of a six-month pilot project. In accordance with Section 45 and 53 of the Planning Act, as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustments for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustments considers applications for minor variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to create new jobs. To ensure a fair and timely hearing, I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications require a more in-depth review. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda and ask if anyone other than the agent or the applicant is present and in interest and wishes to address the committee. If there are people in interest, the matter will be held until all non-contested applications have been cleared. If your item is held, we strongly advise you to meet with the interested parties outside the hearing room in an effort to resolve concerns or issues. If no person is present in interest, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. When addressing the committee, please come forward, hand in your decision request card to the committee staff seated on my right, then go to the podium, clearly state your name and address. If you have a written submission that you read from, please hand it to the Deputy Secretary Treasurer when you are done. The applicant or agent will have five minutes. The individuals, either in support or opposed, will be allowed to express their views. If there are several speakers sharing the same view, please select a spokesperson. We want to hear your views, however, covering the same points will not advance your cause. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their submission. When all speakers have finished, the applicant will be given an opportunity to rebut only the related issues that were raised. The matter will then be taken by committee into committee for decision. That will be the end of all discussion. If you do not agree with the decision, you may file an appeal. Almost all appeals are now dealt with by a new tribunal called the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or T-Lab. For more information about T-Lab, visit their website or the Committee of Adjustment website. Appeal instructions will be included at the bottom of every decision. In order to receive a copy of our decision and to be informed of appeal proceedings, you must fill out the decision request card. Please include your email address, as T-Lab will be sending out notifications by email. Please make sure you hand in your completed form to the Deputy Secretary Treasurer or her staff before leaving today. Decisions will be mailed within three business days. We have a confirmation of the, and we have a motion to confirm the last minutes, the last meeting minutes? Second? All in favor? Minutes are confirmed. Any declarations of interest on this morning's list?
No.
Okay, any files to be closed, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer? Okay. Are there any applicants here who wish to withdraw their application at this time?
Can we run through the order before you ask about deferrals?
Before I ask them?
Ask if anybody wants to defer. Can we just run through the order first?
No, I asked if they want to withdraw. I haven't asked about deferrals yet.
Right.
Okay. So, I'm going to vet the list now. I want, the applicant can indicate that they're here, and anybody in opposition can indicate that they're here. Number 168 Queensdale Avenue, applicant? Yes, any opposition?
No.
Okay, number 2, 5 Belair Boulevard? Applicant, any opposition? No. Number 3, 121 Lynnhurst Avenue? Yes, any opposition? Nope. Number 4, 26 Peverill Hill South? Applicant? Yes, any opposition? No. Number, pardon? Okay, number 5, 32 Walder Avenue? Applicant? Yes, any opposition? Okay. Number 6, 180 Coleridge Avenue? Yes, any, any opposition? Number 7, 12 Simmington Avenue? Applicant, any opposition? 8, 385 Shooter Street? Applicant, any opposition? No. Number 9, 46 Glen Oak Drive? Applicant, any opposition? No. Okay. Number 10, 422 Kingswood Road? Applicant, any opposition? No. Number 11, 105 Grenadier Road? Yes, any opposition? Number 12, 23 Linsmore Crescent? Applicant, any opposition? Yes, okay, would you, you might want to go outside and discuss the matter and see if you can resolve it. Number 13, 441 Main Street? Applicant, any opposition? No. Number 14, 403 Sunnyside Avenue? Applicant, any opposition? Okay. Number 15, 214 Donvegan Road? Applicant, any opposition? Number 16, 196 Grace Street? Applicant? Okay, nobody here, any opposition here? Okay, well, we'll hold that one until somebody shows up. 1794 Merrick Street? Applicant, any opposition? No. 185 Stanton Avenue? Yes, any opposition? No. 1954 Belfair Avenue? Yes, opposition? Thank you. 20, 1364 Queen Street East? Applicant? Nobody here? Opposition? No, okay, we'll hold that one as well. Number 21, 41 Marlowe Avenue? Any opposition? No. 22, 25 Havelock Street? Any opposition? No. Okay, 23, 59 Standish Avenue? Applicant? Any opposition? Yes, perhaps you could go out. We're going to hold that one down, perhaps you can go out and discuss the matter. 24, 31 Westlake Avenue? Any opposition? Okay. Yeah, right. Okay, number 1, 68 Queensdale Avenue? Are there any deferrals? Okay. Yeah. Okay, 68 Queensdale Avenue? The purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story, single-family detached dwelling with a detached garage by constructing a second-story addition. The detached garage will be maintained. The committee has to be for it. Material submitted by the applicant and a staff report from Transportation Services. Your name, sir?
It's Enzo Locaseno. I'm the agent.
How come you're so far forward?
It's like HD. Do you want me to pull it back?
No, no.
Okay.
No, no, it's fine.
Oh, I see, okay. Mr. Chairman, unless our, my colleagues have any questions on this application, I think it's fairly straightforward, and I'd be prepared to bring forward a motion of approval. Okay, then I'd like to recommend approval of the application. I think it's minor, and I believe that it, in fact, meets the four tests for variance.
I'd like to second that. All in favor? Have your approvals, sir. Thank you for your presentation. Number 2, 5 Belair Boulevard? The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition, a rear deck, a rear basement walkout, a front porch, and a front bay window. Before us on this application, we have material submitted by the applicant and a report from Right-of-Way Management. Your name?
My name is Pamela Penn. I'm the agent of the application.
Okay. You tell us what this, just give us a little as to what this is about.
All right, so I have, we sent out 49 letters to the neighbors, and we got positive response, and here are 10 supporting letters. May I submit?
Yes, bring it forward, please.
Again, Mr. Chair, this application seems of a fairly minor nature. Unless anyone has questions here, I'd be ready to put forward a motion.
Well, at first, I want to read into the record the letters of support, just for the record. One from 10 Belair, one from 14, one from 20, one from 22, one from 359 Davisville Avenue, one from 366 Davisville Avenue, one from 370 Davisville Avenue, one from 3 Belair, one from 7 Belair, one from 15 Belair, one from 8 Belair. All right, make your motion.
I'd like to put forward a motion, and I can, glad to see the neighbors agree that, in my opinion, this is a very minor application, inappropriate for the neighborhood, and therefore I move that we approve the application.
Second, there? Second, all in favor? You have your approval, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number 3, 121 Lynnhurst Avenue? The purpose of this application is to alter the existing three-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear second-story addition. Before us, we have material submitted by the applicant and correspondence in support from 364 Davenport Road. And it looks like a very minor application. Do we have any questions, or do we have a motion?
No, I'm ready for a motion. Nobody has any questions?
Sir, you might give us your name first, just for the record.
Yes, I am the applicant. My name is Stan Soto, and I also have two letters from the adjoining neighbors who approve the application.
Could you bring those forward, and we'll just read them into the record before we make the motion? Do you have Mr. Hardy's address? Because he gives us an address on Davenport, which I doubt whether he's in, within the notice area.
I don't know, Mr. Hardy.
Okay. So we have letters of support from 177 and 125?
117 and 1?
117 and 125.
125.
Thank you.
Zerofying Neighbors.
Yeah, do we have a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion. There's only one variance, it's really minor, it's maybe a gap variance of less than three-quarters of a meter. It needs more tests, and neighbors, adjacent neighbors in support, so I'm going to rule the application with no conditions.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir.
Thank you.
Number 4 is 26 Peverill Hill South. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition with a ground floor, rear deck, and before us we have material submitted by the applicant. Your name, sir?
Good morning, my name is Aaron Ideween. I'm the agent for the applicant.
Yes, can you tell us about this?
Yeah, so it is a two-story rear addition. A portion of it, the north end of the rear addition is, first floor and basement are existing, so we're topping up probably 50% of it, and then adding the additional portion to the south, basically squaring off the rear addition, the existing rear addition, and then adding a rear deck.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Forest recondition on this one?
Yes, number one.
No.
We've spoken to all the adjacent neighbors, to the north and the adjacent neighbor of the south, and they're familiar with the project, and they were in support of it. We don't have any letters in support.
Don't have a letter.
Yeah, just a good conversation with them.
So, my major concern was the size of the variance, number one, for the old bylaw, excuse me, and that affects the south side lot line, and that's the neighbor you've talked to, and they don't have any concerns?
We've spoken to the neighbors on both sides. The neighbors on the north side are, they're essentially, we're at their backyards, because we're one in from the corner.
Okay, do we have any questions, or do we have a motion?
I'm ready for a motion. I'd like to put forward a motion to approve the application. I think it's fit and appropriate for the neighborhood, and I would tie it to the urban forestry condition, number one.
Okay.
Second, there? All in favor? Have your approval. Carl? Number 5, 32 Walder Avenue? Purpose of this application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with an[1369.72][1369.75]integral garage. We have before us on this application a plan, a material submitted by the applicant, 12 signature petition in support, and a correspondence in concern from 40 Walder Avenue. Your name, sir?
Good morning, Ali Shokiri. I'm the designer and the agent. I'd be requesting to increase the floor area to 80%, and also a few other technical variances, and a below-grade garage, which is technical also, it's sloping towards the street. And the floor area we are requesting is well-presented in the area. We studied variances up to 88% on Walder, it's approved, but 80% adequately responds to my clients' needs, so we don't need to go that high. And I have no further comments. If there is any question, I'd be more than glad to answer.
Can I refer you to your elevation drawing, A6? Can you clarify the grade of the adjacent properties? Is it, the garage in this elevation appears to be considerably lower than the rest of the grade, is that because the driveway is, you said it's sloping towards the street, but it's actually, it's a cut driveway?
It's a cut driveway.
The grades to the, the two sides are as shown on here, is that correct?
Yes, the grades to two sides are shown here, and the driver is cut into the grade simply because the front of the property berms up. So we usually have to maintain a positive slope between 2% to 6%. With this particular lot, even if we went with 6%, it would have ended with a below-grade garage because of the natural berming up in front of the property. So I don't know if I answered your question.
As you did, thank you.
Pleasure.
Any further questions? Do we have a motion?
So, I recognize this is a new construction, but there's a letter of objection from the neighbor at 40, respect to the zero lot line setback for the eaves.
Yeah, that's only for the eaves. We are complying with the side yard setback.
Sorry, the eaves, yes, I understand the side yard you are, but.
So the downspout is going to be by the, by the side, while the downspout is not going to go to the, to the neighbor's property, and.
Is it an existing, I know, it looks like the current house is quite close, so is that the situation now, the current house is quite close to the lot line?
It is, it is.
Okay.
And if you don't mind, I'd like to add that the opposite side, number 30, we had the same situation, but since the existing house on number 30 is very close to property line, we set our house back. Although the bylaw allows us to go to 1.6 foot or 46 centimeter on that side, we increased the side yard voluntarily in order to create more gap between the two houses, in order to maintain a healthy surface water drainage, which we didn't have that situation on the other side, so we basically kept the side yard as of right, and that eave is encroaching.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, or do we have a motion?
No other questions, I'll move approval of the application. I believe it needs the four tests, it's new construction, and I believe you also had a 12 signature petition in support submitted with the application, and it looks like you addressed the other neighbor's concern by increasing the side yard on that side, so I'll move approval of the application with no conditions.
Second?
I'll second the, or the motion.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Number 6, 180 Coleridge Avenue? Purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story, single-family detached dwelling by constructing a basement extension, a front one-story addition, and a new front yard packing pad. Before us on this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, a staff report from Right-of-Way Management, and from Community Planning, two form letters in support, and a letter in concern or interest from 177 Coleridge Avenue. Okay, are there any questions? This looks relatively minor. Your name, sir?
My name is Herman Weisman, G-E-R-M-A-N. I represent the applicant.
Do you sound a staff condition?
No, actually, we didn't.
The front condition requiring a front yard setback should be no greater than one story in height?
Yep, which is what we designed. Yep.
So, unless anyone has any questions, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve the application. I think it's relatively minor in nature and fit and appropriate for the neighborhood, and I would tie it to that condition I just mentioned about the front not greater than one story in height.
A second, there? A second, all in?
I just have a question. Is Right-of-Way Management asking? They're okay, but they're not asking for the pavement?
No.
So should your committee decide to grant the parking and landscaping variances? But in the body of the report, they're asking for semi-pavable, semi-permalable paving material.
All in? All in, pardon?
Will you amend the motion?
No, go ahead.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Have your approval, sir, thank you. Number 7, 12 Simmington Avenue? Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story townhouse by constructing a rear two-story addition, a rear second-floor covered deck, and a rear detached garage.
I am the applicant and owner of 12 Simmington.
All right. So, this is a duplex?
It's a three-row house scenario. We're one of the end houses, and all of the other houses have additions on the back. This is the only one that doesn't. The addition, when it goes on, will still be shorter than the additions on the adjacent two houses.
So, just to clarify, there won't be a view, I'm concerned with the privacy from your second-floor deck. The, the view from your deck to the north and the south is obstructed by the additions that are already...
I can, I can put a picture up if you like.
Yeah, please.
In the back of the house. I don't know. Sorry. The house on the right is 12 Simmington. The other two are the attached houses from the other side, so the addition comes out on the back, so it won't be overlooking the other, other decks of the other houses. And the addition comes out shorter than the one-story addition that it's adjacent to. And there's a much larger two-story addition to the end unit at the, that would be 16 Simmington.
So, there is overview in one direction?
There would be some overview of the back garden from, from the, from the walkout deck on the back. It's not a very large deck, it's just a place to have a cup of coffee in the morning type of thing.
Wouldn't be looking into that. It's on the second floor.
And if I can show another picture here as well that may be, may be helpful. If you look at how it's designed, the deck is in that little white square that's notches in, so it actually protects the house to the, to the side, so it blocks the view to the backyard of number 14.
You're the end unit?
We're the end unit, yes, that's correct.
Okay, fine, thank you.
All right. Any further questions, or do we have a motion?
Okay, if there's no questions, I've reviewed the material, and I'd like to bring a motion forward for approval of the application. In my view, this meets the four tests and is fit and appropriate for the neighborhood.
I'll second that. All in favor, have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much.
Number eight, 385 Shooter Street. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a partial rear third-floor addition, addition with a rear third-floor terrace, and a rear two-story addition and ground-floor deck. Before us on this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, a staff report from planning, correspondence and support from 365 and 373 Shooter, one form letter from 371 Shooter, correspondence and interest from 385 Shooter, and opposition from 387 Shooter, and 134 Stackville Street. Your name, sir?
Vasilis Akonomopoulos. And I'm the applicant and owner.
All right. Does anybody have any questions?
You saw the screening condition?
When you say the screening condition, the privacy?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you have any problems with that?
No, no problems whatsoever. Actually, the, my neighbor's here today as well, and we've agreed in, in fashion what to, what to do there.
It's two meters?
Two meter, yeah. So, we've talked about, the document actually specifies a meter and a half.
Yeah.
But I'm more than happy to accommodate the two-meter, two height limit.
Great. I think she put two.
If there are no further questions...
The only thing I would say, I do have a couple things. As long as that two meters isn't conflicting with any other bylaw, I'm more than happy to accommodate, so that, that's the only thing. So, just the one thing. And then the other matter I have is in the zoning hearing, the setback on the, on the east side of the, of the application was specified, but in the public hearing, it was not. So, I want to make sure in this, in this matter, that both sides, the east and, the setback on the both, both east and west sides of the property are addressed in this, in this issue.
I'm not sure what you're talking about. The public hearing and the private?
No, no, so, the public hearing notice, though the public did not, the zoning notice specified, where is it here?
We have a variance number two with respect to the west side lot line, is that what you mean?
Yes, but also on the east side, we have a variance of .00 on the zoning, but in the public hearing, it wasn't specified. So, one of...
And the notice, you mean?
And, yeah, in the public notice, yes, sorry.
So, it doesn't indicate that you need a variance, but if it's 00, so is this...
So...
Semi-detached?
Yes, it is, that's correct.
Okay, I think that probably means it complies with the bylaw on the east side.
Yeah, I'd just like to confirm that, that's what we're...
You don't have to come back. You want to make sure you don't have to come back.
That, that's correct, yes.
And the neighbor on the east side has, has, is the neighbor on the east side the neighbor that is, no, the west side neighbor is here.
No, the, the neighbor on the west side is here.
The east side neighbor has, in support of your application?
No, objected.
Objected.
Yep. 387.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The zoning notice that was filed with the application only specifies a setback on the west side. It doesn't say anything about the east side.
We take it then that the east side complies?
Oh, wait a second. I'm sorry, variance number four, where the sidewall contains no opening, the proposed side lot line setback is zero meters on the east side and eight, so that would be added to, under the old bylaw. Yeah, but the last one, sorry, yeah, instead, it should say, the altered dwelling will be located 0.08 meters from the west side lot line and zero meters from the east side lot line, under the old bylaw only.
So, the notice is incorrect?
The notice didn't include the east side yard setback of zero meters, which I'm now, you're now understanding that that's what the neighbor on the east side is opposed.
Have you spoken to the neighbor on the east side about the setback?
I have not spoken to him. The individual is out of the country, and haven't had the opportunity to communicate with them. But I'll show, if you like, I can show you a visual of what the contested objection is.
Yeah, I remember. Yeah, I remember.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that's right.
You're going to extend, and you're going to continue with the 00 setback?
Yeah, so what we're doing is we're not exceeding any setback that doesn't exist already on our property from our neighbors. So, on the west side, it's 0.08, and on the east side, it's already 0.0.
What was the window over here? Are you going to be blocking that guy's window?
Actually, that, you're seeing to the left here, that's actually a patio, it's not a window, so the fence just makes it look like that, yeah. So, we'll extend out a little bit more to, right to where the patio is flush in our neighbors. And again, she's more, she's looked over the, looked over the drawings and is in agreement of it, in support.
Is the neighbor on the east side?
Neighbor on the west.
On the west?
Yeah.
So, the neighbor said they're trying to build a major extension on the south side of their property without any direct access, hence they may try to deliver materials in the south laneway and use it. That's not before us, or a crane to lift materials over the private property.
Yeah, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, can we deal with this without that variance? Although, the neighbor that's directly affected seems to have been aware of it and raised her objections to it.
Technically, it's a variance that we didn't notify, and it would have to be deferred.
So, we should defer this application?
No. It's up to you. I mean, if you feel that it's...
Given the condition, I think it's a logical thing. I mean, it's, it's no big surprise that there's going to be a zero setback there.
Yeah, it's pretty impossible to comply with .45 meters in that situation.
Do we open it for an appeal or not?
Just to clarify, so the, the variance that was missed is only under the old bylaw. In terms of the new bylaw, it complies.
Yeah, but in addition to that, the, the party directly affected seems to have been aware of the fact that you're building with a zero side lot setback?
Yes, and to be frank, I'm a little surprised that he submitted an objection because we had a number of conversations relating to this. We've already submitted permits to dig out the basement the last six months, and we've been talking to him on a regular basis. So, it does come to a surprise to us that he would object, given that, number one, his lot is on a zero setback, and you can see by the visualizations, he's even venting into our yard, and, and he's got a drain that's actually on our property as well, so...
387 is the objector?
Yeah.
They've requested a copy of the decision.
Pardon?
They have requested a copy of the decision.
Mr. Chair, they're aware of the intention.
Mr. Chairman, I'm satisfied that, that this is not inappropriate or, or not to be expected. I think it's logical. I'd like to recommend approval of the revised application with variance number two under the old bylaw, to read that the altered dwelling will be located .08 meters from the west side lot line and zero meters from the east side lot line, and subject to the condition amended by the, an amended condition by the planning department that requests that the rear third-story deck shall be constructed with opaque screen, privacy screening or fencing that is permanent, located on the west edge of the deck, and a minimum height of 1.5 meters.
Two meters.
I'm trying to figure, I don't want to put two meters in if it's contrary to the fence bylaws. So, could I say a minimum of 1.5 meters to a maximum of two meters? Measured from floor to deck. I believe that this is appropriate development, and I, I also believe it clearly meets the intent and purpose of the four tests for variance.
Do we have a second, there?
I don't think that the, it's pretty obvious that that setback's not going to be met, and I would second the motion.
I think, I think for the record, that, that we should mention that the, that, I mean, should make it clear that the neighbor to the east had notice of the fact that there was going to be zero...
No, they didn't have notice, they responded.
Well, they did have notice, they had oral notice from the owner. They didn't have official notice from the planning department, but they did have notice, they had discussions, and they wrote a letter of objection. So, the fact that they didn't get official notice does, should not cause us to defer the application.
I would also argue that the sign in the, in the window provides everybody the appropriate notice to look it up online as well.
Okay, all right, so that notice is zero setback from, on the east side?
That's, that's correct. Oh, well, it specifies that we're, we're doing something, and we're having, and it's coming before the committee, so...
Yeah, but not, doesn't say...
Doesn't specify the specifics, yes.
Okay, all right. In any event, we have a motion. Are, is all in favor? Have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
Number nine, 46 Glen Oak Drive. On this application, the purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition. We have before us on this application material submitted by the applicant, a staff report from Right-of-Way Management, and correspondence in support from 32 Glen Oak Drive and 33 Glen Oak Drive. Are there any questions on this application? Looks pretty straightforward. Your name, sir?
Fred Code, I'm the architect presenting for the owner, Collette.
Okay, so, let's just see if there's any questions, or if we can have a motion. Do you know the existing floor space index, Mr. Code?
It'd be in the stats, I'd be, it's under the .35.
Under .35?
Yes, I'm guessing it'd be in the neighborhood of about .29. So, even the slightest addition puts it over .35. It's actually probably somewhere in .32. If you like, I'll check on the stats.
That's okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to put forward a motion, as it seems nobody has any additional questions. I do think this application is appropriate, and would recommend approval.
Second, there?
Second.
All in favor, have your approval, sir.
Thank you.
Number 10, 422 Kingswood Road. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a second-story addition and a rear deck. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, a report from Right-of-Way Management, support from 430 and 440 Kingswood Road. Okay, so, there was a problem with the variance, again, this is a variance that went out and was not correct, was not complete. Variance number one under the new bylaw did not include the words "and will be located zero meters from the south lot line." I understood you were going to speak to the south neighbor?
Yes, I'm Angelo Stoneich, I'm the architect for the owner, for 22 Kingswood, and we spoke to the neighborhood on the affected side, and he was notified of the variance and the difference in wording, and he signed the letter acknowledging the...
All right, could you bring that forward, please? So, this is a letter from 420 Kingswood Road. It said, "I understand that there was an error in the original variance notification. I have read the above variance and have no objections. The above variance includes the words 'and will be located zero meters from the south lot line.'" Okay, thank you. Can you tell us about this, please?
We're asked, introducing two new variances, the GFA and length. Although the existing dwelling is 19.17 meters, so basically, we're cutting short the proposed dwelling for almost two meters, which is improving the condition in the backyard. And the GFA we're asking for is 0.76, and we did the research on the previous committee decisions, and we have found out that on the street, it has been approved up to 0.79, and in the neighborhood, even over 1.05. even over 1.05. So we believe that our variance is not... It's in keep with the neighborhood and the character that exists there. All the other variances are the existing condition because we have an existing single-story bungalow that we are topping off with second story. So we're keeping the side yard setbacks, the front yard setback, the parking is not existing as it is. So the only new two variances are GFA and basically the length, which is getting better.
Getting shorter.
Yeah.
Can you tell us what the floor space index of the existing building is?
Just one second. It is 0.46.
Point seven six, and the permit is point six, so it's below...
It's way below what permitted.
As a one-story, you'd be making a two-story.
Yes.
If there's no further questions, I'm prepared to make a motion of approval of the application. I believe it's reasonable. The neighbor has been affected by the misnomer in the notice. It didn't affect the variances, but that neighbor has acknowledged that, and I'll move approval with no conditions.
All in favor? You have your approval.
Thank you so much.
There's a condition.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Yeah.
It is a condition, yeah.
The owner's required to remove the notation to the parking area.
No. No, we didn't get that.
Okay, I didn't have a note. I didn't have a note in my...
I did, but I just...
Michael? Yes.
On the back.
Oh, okay.
Right now, I have a copy.
We also...
Why would amend my...
That's why it was on the plans.
Right.
But we can remove...
Saying it would be refused. They're not going to give it to you, but you want it removed from the plans, so I'm sorry. That is an amendment to my motion.
Okay. Make your motion.
I seconded already.
Yeah.
There are three, Mr. Chairman. Just a second. They're asking for no parking. So if they go and apply for a front yard parking pad, they're not going to get the approval anyway.
Variance is corrected. Zero parking will be provided.
So you're covered anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, Mr. President, don't need to change it then?
No, I was under the impression that it was already there, and that they would have to remove it to the satisfaction of Right-of-Way.
It is there. No, 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 we don't have a parking pad. It was a proposal.
They just want it removed from the plans. They want it removed from the plans.
Do you want to add that as a condition?
I think that would be good.
Just remove it from the site plan, basically.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, as a condition of your decision, or are you just advising them to remove it from their plan?
I think we should make it a condition.
To remove that notation that's on the plans, because that's not what it is.
Okay.
I believe that notation, I believe they're correct, should be removed from the plans.
Mr. Nefel, you seconded. You agree with the amendment?
I'm fine.
All in favor? I think we should go to the amended motion. Thank you. Number 11, 105 Grenadier Road. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear third-floor addition. Before us on this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, 11 form letters in support.
Hello, my name is Margaret McGookin. I'm the agent for the owners on this application. I just quickly wanted to point out that a letter we submitted on March 12 indicated slight alteration to the plan to mitigate some questions that the attached neighbor had. So I do have copies to submit as part of the application.
Can I just... That was going to be my question. The plans that we have before us don't indicate the change.
No, because as of March 12, we weren't allowed to submit drawings.
Okay, so those are the revised plans, and you're really, you're not going to see much difference because it's four inches, right?
No, but it basically clarified to them that we would not be building on the party wall below, and that we're doing all the work within our own property. And those were the concerns that they expressed, was encroachment and runoff, and so...
Doesn't change your variance.
No, exactly. It doesn't change the variance, but it was... Those were the concerns that they expressed, and so we wanted to point out to them that that was how we were going to approach the project, so...
Okay, so I think those plans should be filed at least.
If you, like I say, have hard copies, then of course I can forward them by email. I'm going to draw.
Because it's four inches.
Actually, the ones that... Oh, sorry. The drawings that are most affected aren't the site plan, but the third floor plan.
A5, A6, and A8.
Yes, so that's the third floor plan, the roof plan, and the rear elevation, the south elevation that shows the setback proposed.
So you should file them?
Okay.
For the record.
So it doesn't affect the variance. Anyway, they're here if you want them.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, I think the variance we're requesting is really just to... is very similar to ones in the neighborhood, and I guess if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to provide whatever answers I can.
No questions. We have a motion. Mr. Nefel?
No, I don't have any questions, sir.
Well, he was in process.
I think this is a very minor, minor variance for the neighborhood, and recommend approval.
I think in the motion, you should just say that revised plans A5, A6, and A8 were filed today do not affect the variance.
We can't take that decision.
Pardon?
Are you tying them to these plans?
No, no, no. I'm just saying they were filed.
I have that. They were filed.
Okay, okay. Doesn't need to be part of the motion?
If the applicant wants it to be tied to these plans.
No, no, no.
The only concern that I have, Mr. Chairman, is that the neighbors negotiated the changes, as minor as they are, and the applicant in good faith has filed the drawings to show her willingness to comply with the neighbor's concerns.
Well, actually, clarification. The neighbors just expressed concerns. We told them that this is what we're doing, and I guess basically by the fact that they're not here today, they have basically have no further comment on it, and I guess are leaving it to the building department to confirm that we do everything as we should in terms of their party wall, things like that. But without putting words in their mouth, that was my understanding. I don't know if that makes it easier or worse.
Why don't we just put a condition tied into the client submitted today?
I don't have... I don't think my clients would have any objection to that. That's why we did it, so...
And the motion stands then with that little addition?
Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to second the motion. I'd also like to compliment the applicant. This is a very comprehensive application, very easy to understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor? You have your approval.
Thank you.
Number 13, 441 Main Street. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear one-story addition and to construct a new detached garage in the rear yard. We have before us the material submitted by the applicant, support from 439 and 460 Main Street, a six-signature petition in favor, and opposition from 476 Main Street. Your name, sir?
He just handed that in. We've already got it.
Oh, we got that, Mr. Chairman. Okay.
We have that in our agenda.
Oh, I filed it yesterday and this morning. I didn't see it online. That's why I brought it.
Yeah. Your name, sir?
Ryan Ahoye, agent for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, this is fairly minor, an application. I'd be willing to put forward a motion unless my colleagues have questions about the application.
I have one question. We have an objection about access to the garage, and frankly, none of us can understand the objection. Can you explain to us how you get access to the garage?
There's a shared driveway between the houses to go to the back, which is maintained by three or four of the owners.
And you have access to that, right?
Yeah, it's a right-of-way registered on title to access to that property.
And it goes westward, so you drive up that and then turn around. And there's another right-of-way at the back, a really big one, wide, sorry.
So there's the right-of-way coming in
Yeah.
from the street, and then there's right-of-way across, and the garage will be here.
Okay.
So is this this right-of-way at the back, is that a laneway?
No, it's not a laneway. It's just a block of land to give access to a number of the properties around there.
Okay, so it does it exit at some point onto a street?
Yeah, it dies in off Main Street. So it's a T. Main Street is down here, so it comes in here into this block.
Oh, this is Main Street. So you only... You can only get to it through the right-of-way between the houses?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring forward a motion of approval. I believe this is extremely minor application that clearly meets the four tests for variance, and I think it is appropriate development for the area.
I'd like to second the motion.
All right, all in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Number 14, 403 Sunnyside Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing three-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear third-story addition with a rear third-floor deck and a ground-floor deck. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, a report from planning, and a one-signature letter of support. Your name, sir?
Raffalo Petracchi, the applicant and owner.
Does anybody have any questions? This looks...
Here's the deck at long time.
So how large... The deck is quite large, is that right?
The deck on the third floor is not... So it is... I wouldn't say it's enormous, but it is larger, but it does not exceed the building envelope.
Yeah.
And we, the neighbor who is... Because it's a semi-detached, the neighbor who's most impacted, we've had conversations with them, largely addressing... The conversation centered around privacy. That's why we have maintained opaque screening, privacy fencing. And you'll note also in the staff report that was submitted, one of the conditions or recommendations from the city planning department was to make sure that that privacy screening was addressed and incorporated, and you'll note that our architect has already included that in the drawings. If you look at, I believe, A23, you'll see that we have privacy screening that will go to 1.5 minimum, and planters on the north side as well to address screening for our neighbors on the north side. We've done the research, so the current GFA is 201.53, which is 81% of the area. We are asking for to go up to 84%. We've done an assessment of the properties within 1,000 meters, and we feel that this is well within the precedent that's already been established by the committee. We have examples of that if the committee would like to see it.
I think it's minor enough that we don't need to see that.
Okay.
Unless anyone else wants to see it.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further questions, and thank you for that presentation, unless there's something like that.
I do have one technicality to add, actually. You'll notice that the notice that went out actually suggests that, well, indicates that we are seeking 209 square meters of property. We actually submitted plans for 210.1. I have a letter here from the architect, as well as an email from the planning department confirming that... Sorry, confirming that we...
Is that still .84 times the lot?
It is.
So its number's wrong, but the...
Correct.
Percentage is correct.
Percentage is correct.
The new number is 210.1.
That confirmed by zoning examiner?
I have a correspondence here from the architect.
How did the 209 get in?
I don't know how they came up with it, but the technician, Jason Bragg, came back and said, "That's fine. We are going to amend before it goes to the committee," and then it just never happened. And so the architect, when we got the notice called back and said, "We'd like to change this," what ends up happening is that Mary at the city said, "Just write a letter and have it amended on the day." May, sorry. My mistake.
Okay, so you're saying that the percentage is right, but we're off by a meter, 1.1 meters?
Yeah.
What about the existing? Maybe the issue is that the 171.91, what's... Is that correct, or does that give us the leeway? Is that also one meter over?
So that's... The 171.91 is what I think is the bylaw or original. It was amended to 201.53 in 2014, or 2011, sorry, and now we're seeking an additional amount.
Extremely minor what you're asking for.
Yeah, and so the issue here is what we want to avoid is this going back to planning and them saying, "No, no, you don't have..." The committee only ruled on 209 as opposed to 210.1.
But just... So whose error was it?
It was the...
209?
That I'm not clear on. My architect can come.
The problem is, is we don't know what zoning... Zoning comes up with the numbers. Don't fit.
So we'll take it to a waiver.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think the... We're protected by the .84 is correct. If that was wrong off by, it was .83, I think there'd be a bigger problem. The number in the meter squared is sort of in brackets. I believe that the overriding issue is the... And I don't think anything turns on that. So I'd be prepared to make a motion, subject to the condition about the screening and the planting on the deck, to revise that to 80.84 times the area of the lot, being 210.1 meters squared.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
I'm happy to second the motion, but I understand the planning wants you to have a very specific screen on the south, 1.5 meters high
Yep.
big screening, and then planting bed on the north, as shown on the plan, but actually all it shows is there's a rectangle with, it says, "planting bed." Is it... What is the planting bed? Is it a raised structure?
It will be a raised structure, so that... The intention is so that you actually at standing height cannot see through.
How high is the planter itself?
I don't have those details, but...
The question is, this recommendation is silly if in fact it's a planting bed and you put grass in it, and it isn't raised. So I'm wondering if the planting bed has a height, if we should put that in the condition.
I don't know what the specific height is, and unfortunately, the drawings don't. I can just see if the elevation...
I think that, you know, it's first of all, there's an issue of enforcement. They're going to have a planting bed. The assumption is they're going to put some trees in front of it to hide, but there's no condition about that. You could put a one-inch plant or just put grass in there, and no one's...
No plants.
There's no issue of enforcement on that.
Yeah.
So I appreciate it's to prevent overlook on the north. You said you're okay with that. I'll just point out that there's... I'll just point out that there's really no enforcement, and the planting bed doesn't talk about that you should put in a minimum of six-foot evergreens or something, or two-feet evergreens or whatever. There's no enforcement, so...
What I would suggest is that in the condition from planning, we change the wording to say that in a planting bed, to prevent overlook to the north be provided, and that clarifies what the...
It's not going to prevent, it may be reduce or minimize.
Okay, to minimize overlook.
It's not going to prevent it unless you put up, you know, full-height cedars or something. So I think it's a bit of a it's unfortunate that they put that in.
Do we want to put that extra wording?
The planting bed.
It becomes subjective in terms of...
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that would be my concern.
It's Michael's motion. Okay.
Okay, so I would maybe delete the reference to a planting bed, because I think it's a bit of a red herring, because there's no reference to the size of the plantings you're going to put on that bed. So they could still do it as a goodwill gesture to the neighbors or whatever, but I think it's I would agree with Mr. Nefal, we should take those wordings out of the that can do.
Well, actually, I'm recommending we add more in, but...
No, I don't think I don't think we can do it in terms of putting it in to prevent overlook is...
No, but why don't we just leave it as is? Because at least it's there, and it's clear what needs to be there. Doesn't become vague and subjective.
Right, so we don't have the reference to prevent overlook
No.
and just leave it the way it is. Okay, I would agree with that.
Is that what your motion is?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second it as is.
Do is sorry, just would you like the copy of the correspondence between the city and the architect on the group? No?
Not part of our
Okay, thanks.
decision.
All in favor of the motion? You have your approval, sir. Number 15, 214 Dunvegan Road. Purpose of this application is to construct a pool cabana, an ancillary building in the rear yard of the subject property. We have material submitted by the applicant. We have four form letters in support. Your name, sir?
Good morning. My name is Andy Verhill. I am the architect, as well as the agent for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, unless my colleagues have questions on this application, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval. This is extremely minor, clearly meets the test for variance, and constitutes good development, in my opinion.
I'll second that.
There's an urban forestry condition?
Urban forestry condition number one.
That's correct. We are aware of that, and we are pursuing that permit.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
16 was held because they weren't here, yeah.
Yeah. Number 16, 196 Grace Street. Is the applicant here?
Yes, yes.
Are you the applicant? Is there anybody in opposition to this application?
No, it's mine.
Okay.
The garage is lot line to lot line. It's not makes...
Purpose of this application is to construct a new rear detached garage. Lisa? We have before us material submitted by the applicant and correspondence in support from 200 Elizabeth Street. Where's Elizabeth Street in relation to Grace Street?
Well, that's I think that's a letter that the owner of the property, he's a doctor, he wrote a letter.
Yeah, what hospital is it?
Yeah, he wrote a letter, he was trying to get a hearing sooner because of the winter and stuff.
No, it is. It's the owner indicating that the doctor, the owner, needs access to a car quickly, and it needs to be...
So this is this is not really a letter of support, it's a letter...
No, it's a letter, he was asking for a sooner date, because we applied in October, because he's a doctor and he needs to operate, and it was just to see if he could get a sooner date.
Okay.
Didn't happen, so...
Question from Mr. Perez. I guess it looks like you're only two meters, 2.06 meters over the size requirement for the ancillary building, but the lot coverage is going from 10 to 17. I guess that's a function
Yeah.
small lot, but the garage itself is only two over.
And it's very common in the area. Just the new bylaws kicks in, but all the houses don't...
Building lot line is doing a full garage. So in that case, I would agree that this is minor. I think it meets the four tests, and it's good planning, so I move approval of the application.
Second the motion. All in favor? You have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much.
Number 17, 94 Merrick Street. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a front third-floor dormer. We have material submitted by the applicant, a staff report from planning. And your name, sir?
My name is Daniel Karpinski. Good morning. I'm an architect, and I'm an agent for the owner.
Okay, so do we have any questions on this?
Yes, I do. I had some difficulty understanding the drawings that were submitted to us, in particular, how the roof, the proposed roof deck impacts the property adjacent, and also, there's no front elevation, at least in the materials that we have. And the addition is a front addition. So if you have drawings that you could speak to, could you put them on the overhead and explain those two points? Is the deck here? I don't know.
Can I speak to this? Yeah, I can, okay. That's the front elevation, the front view from the street, and you can see the second floor, and our intention is to build the dormer above the second floor. So that will be the existing attic plan.
Could you straighten it out?
And that's the proposed attic plan with the yellow area for the dormer. This is what we are adding. That's, sorry for that.
Can you go back one?
Yes.
So this deck is servicing this room, the dormer?
Yes, that's the that's the deck, which is like a one-quarter of the whole frontage adjacent to the to the dormer.
And that's on the front of the building?
And this is the front of the building.
Okay.
So that's the existing section showing orange as existing roofs. That's our proposed section only for the dormer. In front of this dormer, we will have a deck. And that's the proposed elevation showing that the dormer is towards the east, and the deck is towards the west. I am aware of the comments from planning. Planning was suggesting the screen 1.5 meters to the west, and I'm terribly sorry that I didn't submit revised drawings, or that I didn't put the screen in the first place to screen this deck. And of course, I welcome this comment, because it's in the for the benefit of the owners. On the other side, which is the west elevation, the gray-red area, which is the 1.5 meters high, that's the new screen for the deck. And behind that outline with red is the extent of a dormer.
Can you go back to the photograph again? The very first?
That's the existing photograph, and the dormer will be on the above the right window, which is the east window. The dormer will stand on the east window. The deck will be partially above the west window, the second to the left.
And the building on this side, on the east, is two stories as well, right?
Yeah, the building on the on the east side is two-story with the third or the half-story for the for their attic, they have a window as well. So generally, the slope of the street is towards west, and the houses towards west, yes, and the houses on the east part are kind of dominating the street, are higher, slightly higher. I'm not saying that one whatever, one floor higher, but they are higher than our addition or our proposed addition for the for this building. I just want to add one more, one more drawing. The green houses, the green place, the green points are really the places of our neighbors who are in support. So the owners were talking practically to everybody on both sides and in front of the building, and they are in support. I submitted supporting material. And to northwest building, we did the search, of course, of 50 properties that were subject to committee of adjustment, and the dark building, the black building, received from committee of adjustment a higher floor ratio that we are asking. I have just one more comment towards the ratio, towards the variances that we are asking for, which is this one, which is this one. The existing building right now, floor index floor ratio is 091. Addition of the dormer put our variance to 095.
And you're not going higher than the current height of the house, the peak?
No.
So normally, we see it at the back, but you're putting it at the front instead?
Yes, the dormer has by Ontario building code must be lower than the peak of the roof.
But you have you have a window up on the third story now? Because you can't see it in that photograph.
Yes, the attic has the big window towards north, but not towards south.
Oh, so we have a south-facing?
Yes, this is the south-facing elevation, and we don't have any window right now.
Okay, all right. Are there any further questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application. I believe it's minor, adding this dormer, only increasing from .91 to .95. I believe it's good planning and needs the four tests, and that would be subject to the condition about the opaque screening along the west edge of the deck, to a minimum height of 1.5 meters from the floor of the deck.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much.
Number 18, 5 Stanton Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear second-floor addition. The only material we have before us on this application is that submitted by the applicant. Mr. Yazdani?
Yes, Orang Yazdani. I'm the agent representing the owners.
So this is a fairly minor application. Do we have anybody have any questions?
No.
Do we have a motion?
Sorry, I do have the letters of support that I'd like to submit.
All right, please. Okay, so these are letters of support from 1, 2, 3, 7, 9, 11, 14, 22, that's Stanfield, 22 Parkfield Avenue, 30 Parkfield Avenue, 203 Hastings Avenue. So do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be pleased to move approval of the application. I noticed that we've got letters of support from all of the neighbors. There's a block of houses that this property is included in. All of the neighbors within that block have signed letters of support, and I believe the variance request is extremely minor. It is clearly within keeping of the four tests for variance, and it constitutes good development.
I'd like to second the motion.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number 19, 54 Belfair Avenue. Purpose of this application
Good morning.
is, let me separate these pages, to construct sidewalls to the front porch in a rear one-story addition to the existing two-story detached dwelling. We only have material submitted by the applicant. Your name, please?
My name is Anna Voineskus, and I'm the agent for the applicant.
All right, and this is a fairly minor applica- minor variances? Do we have any anybody have any questions? Or do we have a motion?
No questions.
No questions.
The only question I might have is, can you tell me what the existing floor space index is?
It's actually .96.
Oh. So it's not changing?
No. The reason that, maybe I should show you the picture. The reason that it shows that it's changing is because the existing old addition
It's coming down.
It was reconstructed. See, this was existing?
Yeah.
And then it was reconstructed to look exactly the same.
Okay.
And they asked us to come to...
On that case, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve the application. It's mostly changing the existing form, and it's very minor.
I'll second that.
All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
21, is 201364 Queens Street East? Is the applicant here? No, okay. 21, 41 Marlowe Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear one-story addition. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, staff report from planning, and right-of-way management, correspondence in support from 19 Marlowe, 37 Wiley, 50 Marlowe, and 38 Marlowe. Your name, sir?
Good morning. My name's Eric Calhoun. I'm the agent for the owners of 41 Marlowe.
Can you tell us the lot cover, existing lot coverage? Anybody have any questions?
Have you seen the recommendations from the planning department?
I have. It's because we're you can see there's an existing quite a large deck on the house.
Yeah.
So we're not actually changing the coverage at all from what is existing right now, but what planning wants to ensure is that the additional coverage we are asking for is allocated to the addition that we're proposing.
I want to make sure that 38.1% is in fact the building.
Yes, yes, that's just the built area. I also have letters of support from 45, which is the other next-door neighbor.
Could you hand it up, please? One copy will do.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there's a letter of support here from 45 Marlowe Avenue. Okay, so do we have any questions or a motion? Can make a motion?
I'd like to put forward a motion to approve the application, subject to the staff condition.
Second the motion.
Is there an advisory condition for right-of-way management?
No, since they have no problem, I think.
Is it an alteration of your advice?
Location or paving materials requires an application, but if you're leaving it alone, you don't require that.
All right, all in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 22, 25 Havlock Street. Purpose of this application is to is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by reconstructing a second-story deck and before us on this app... And before us on this application, material submitted by the applicant, staff report from planning, support from 43 Havelock, and five form letters in support, opposition from 27 and 29 Havelock. Yeah, and it's, it's been built?
Yeah.
Did you see the staff condition for opaque screening?
We did, yeah. Actually brought some, some pictures to support our request around that.
Daniel Smith, sorry.
Yeah, who's, who's speaking?
Okay, I'm, I'm the co-owner, Miro Bersik.
Okay, so are you objecting to the screening condition?
Well, so one of the, one of the, I guess, ironies in this is that one of the primary objections of our neighbor to the north at 27 Havelock is the shadow that it casts on their yard. And so they actually wanted us to build that deck as, as small as possible. And so that building that, it's already built, and I have some, some pictures here. That is, that's on the north side, and that's, it's 1.03 meters high. The neighbors immediately to the north at 27 do not have any second floor deck. And then the neighbors at 29, interestingly enough, that they're objecting because they applied for a variance for pretty much the same, same idea, and their deck is actually larger than ours.
Do you have glass around this deck?
Well, we, we do. The, the side facing east is all glass, which would be over here, and this is looking south. So it is, it is, it's a little bit more than half wood, and, and then about 40% glass. And then this is another view looking south. This is the neighbor two.
Pictures on your deck, right?
Yeah.
This is taken from the deck, yeah. So looking south, it basically looks, looks over a large parking area, which belongs to the neighbor two doors down. So the.
People at the back, if you're going to have a discussion, please go outside, because you're disturbing, we're hearing you speaking. This is a public hearing, quasi-judicial panel. Thank you.
Am I, am I able to speak on the issue at all?
Okay.
We, there was a confusion. We had permits for a deck that were approved, and we wanted to amend them, and our inspector asked us to put in an amendment. We did. We got a letter back a week later from the city saying that they had been accepted, so we proceeded with building. And, but it turned out that the letter that says it had been accepted meant it had been accepted into the system for review. We've asked them to change their grammar twice now. And so we went ahead and built it. The reason we wouldn't have built it with glass, it's very expensive, was the neighbor to the north that we were friends with at the time, and we, they asked us for as much opaque, like they really wanted sunlight into their backyard as much as possible. There was a pre-existing mudroom where this deck used to be, a two-story building that we tore down completely, that shaded, but when we tore it down, they really liked the new sunlight. And so we tried to amicably sort of split the difference by keeping it as low as possible. We're happy to comply with a privacy fence, though all the emails we're getting from them are to the contrary, that they would prefer more sunlight onto their north property. So we.
Looking onto 27, this is looking on.
So this is that side.
Yeah, that's 27.
They would like more sunlight, and, but the problem is their neighbor to, their north wants full privacy as far as we've been commu, I don't know what they wrote to you, but we just know what they say to us.
They don't have a privacy screen on their deck?
No, I know, but they're, they would like it that way, and they would like us to have it on ours.
We're looking north towards 27 and 29.
Okay, and the person that you put the glass screening on for to allow light is, is the other person?
Yeah, well, partially, those people would like more light too, but we, they had also expressed that they don't want us like staring right down into their property, so we were trying to split the difference.
That's why you go, which is part of it, but.
Yeah. We don't want to look at that neighbor on their deck either, so we're happy to go taller. We're just not going taller because that neighbor wants more sunlight that's right beside us.
You don't have a fence in your backyard?
No, we're building a fence.
That's been another issue.
That's a whole different issue.
They want us to build a.
A completely opaque fence.
A fence that will let a lot of light through, and we would like some privacy, which is sort of the norm in, in Toronto, and they don't want us to build a privacy fence.
We have three children and a dog, and they have plants.
If you kept the glass screening, who's upset? Person one, property over.
Well, I, we don't know what 29 is, is objecting to, but we do know that the neighbors at 27.
Want more light.
They actually.
So the glass is good for them?
Yes.
Well, they would prefer, they would not be, they would prefer us not to build that to 1.5 meters.
People on the other side are happy with glass?
People on the other side are happy with anything. We do, we get along, they don't care. They've never objected. They're, yeah, the, sunlight's not an issue, privacy's not an issue for them, they.
The people objecting.
They're at 27.
27 and 29.
Did they object for privacy? Yeah, well, I figured they, they can't really object due to sunlight, so we, that doesn't surprise us.
The variance is .23 of a meter. That's the, the issue is.
I have another question about that.
Yeah, it's. So they're, there's a, there's a, they're claiming that there should be, it should be .6 meter, that the variance isn't accurate, that you need larger than .23. I'm assuming you had a zoning review done? Is it a ZZ?
It doesn't say what it is.
I don't, no. I think we had everything done, that we were supposed to when we applied, and this, we certainly spoke with the zoning officers quite a bit. And we had a survey done on the property, and.
So the, the original variance request is for the, is for the length of the deck?
Yeah, 17.23.
Yeah. The, the, we just got a letter last week from the planning department about the height of this, the south and north fences, which, which we're happy to do, but it was our understanding.
That they want the opposite.
That the neighbors on, on the north want as, as little fence as possible because it casts shade onto their yard.
Wow.
We don't know what to do.
Not going to satisfy everybody, so.
What's it currently at?
It's 1.03 meters. Which, 42 inches, which I believe is the.
The law, yeah.
Yeah, but you see the adjacent property doesn't have a screen. They went to, in good faith, went to the expense of putting in this glass to accommodate the, the next door neighbor. Exactly, so.
I know, it looks nice. Please don't make us take it down because it's.
I'd be, would be not, in this circumstance, not to provide that requirement for 1.5 meters.
Do we have a motion? I'd like to put forward a motion to approve the application.
With no condition?
As is.
As is.
All right, second?
Second motion.
All right, all in favor? Have your approval.
Thank you. I have a quick question, because my understanding was, we got a survey done and our drawings done, and my understanding was the total, total depth was 17.23 meters, but if our neighbors are saying 17.6.
It says 17.23.
That's why I asked if you had a review done.
Yeah.
The zoning department confirmed it, so go with the numbers.
We don't have any basis of why they, you know.
Just ask, because it was in the letter.
Wouldn't these, out of curiosity, if we do want to build it higher later, even if you haven't recommended, is there anything limiting us to that?
No.
We would have.
I'll have the right to do it.
We would have the right to build.
Okay, thank you very much.
Number 24. Yeah, number 24, 31 Westlake Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear second story addition. We have before us material submitted by the applicant. Your name, sir?
My name is Jordan Brekia. I'm the applicant and owner.
I have a question for the applicant. Yeah, you air the right-of-way management condition?
The traffic.
To remove the paving and restore the curb cut?
Yeah, so it's an existing two-car, like when we moved in, the parking was there, so I saw the staff report condition for that. It doesn't seem like a variance would be able to adjust that under my, yeah, so for this meeting, for the purpose of this meeting, we're seeking the FSI increase only.
But you're, as a condition, you're required to, I mean, if we pass this, the condition is that you remove all paving within the city boulevard, restore the area to green space, and.
Restore the ramp.
Well, yeah, restore the obsolete ramp to a full face curb. In other words, eliminate the ramp and put in a full face curb.
So that would happen through building permit, I imagine? Like when the addition is put in, and?
I, I don't know whether it's a building permit or not, but it's something that, that we've been asked to make a condition of any approval.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I, but I think the variance for, well, that's front yard landscaping. Do you have rear yard landscape?
No, so there was another, in the zoning notice, there was a soft landscaping requirement. The existing condition of the backyard had pea gravel, so with the permit submission, we would switch that to grass, to soft landscaping. Just in, I guess, in regards to the existing parking, like, I don't know if it helps to show, but it follows with the nature of the, the character of the street.
You're not, the parking's not before you.
Your corner property.
Yeah, it's a, it's a corner property, and it shows parking, so that's the two-car parking that's there now.
However, that's not before us, and we can't give you approval for that. They, the right-of-way management people have said.
Yeah.
That it's illegal, and that they will not approve it now or in the future.
Okay, so.
That's city property.
Yeah, okay, so I guess just.
But they're able to remove variance number two now.
Okay, so what we're seeking though is the, for the addition, and as a condition, you know, the parking will be.
And what you've just said about the backyard, are you proposing to take the gravel out and turn it into?
With the building, yeah, when we submit for building permit.
Does that mean you're, if I'm, if you're not clear on what I'm saying?
Sorry?
Okay, the second variance, you're asking that the rear yard landscaping be maintained is?
Zero percent.
Yeah, but you don't, you won't need that.
Well, yeah, what we're saying is we would remove the pea gravel that's there and put in grass.
It may not be 25, 25% though, so I think danger in, limiting that variance. They may still have a variance there, even if they remove the pea gravel.
Really?
Okay. It was 25 square meters, I believe?
I don't know either.
It's 12 square meters. 12 square meters?
What 25% is?
Two by six meters? And that has to be within our property, correct?
Yes.
So we'd have to remove the deck. Okay, so we would remove the, the deck as well?
No, well, we'll just leave this variance in, and if you improve it, then that's fine.
Okay, okay.
All right, so is, are there any further questions? I'm going to have a motion.
I'll move approval of the application, subject to the condition in the right-of-way management memo dated March 15th. The owners required to remove all paving within the city boulevard, restore the area to green space, restore the obsolete ramp, access at the city sidewalk to a full face curb, and all costs of the restoration are responsibility of the property owner.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. Okay, so we're back to number 12, 23 Linsmore Crescent. The applicant here?
Tell the neighbors to come up.
Yeah, neighbors, come up, sit in this front row here.
On here.
Or in the. Madam, are you trying, trying to say something?
I'm just wondering how, we came in a little late, and I didn't want to interrupt. Did you review number 20?
No, we're holding that. We're holding that, we'll do it after this one.
Okay, thank you.
Because nobody was here. Yeah. Yeah, so that's right. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a second story addition and a rear two-story addition. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, opposition from 21 Linsmore Crescent, and a 27 signature petition in opposition. Your name, sir?
Daniel Wong, the applicant, agent of the owner. Before I go on, I would like to make modifications to the minor variance that are being requested.
Okay.
I would like to eliminate variance number two under the new bylaw, the building depth. So we're shrinking, so we're making it as of right. And in, yeah, eliminating. And in doing so.
Sorry, we need to catch up. Do you need a minute to catch up? Yes. Just needs a minute.
No, no problem, no problem, no problem.
These revisions that were discussed outside with neighbors, or is this?
Yeah, we just discussed that outside with the neighbors, yeah. Yeah. And in doing so, it eliminates variance number four under the old bylaw, because we are no longer exceeding the depth of 17 meters. No, the deck stays.
Okay, any other variant?
And, and by doing so, we, I calculated, we shrunk the building, so the total floor space index reduces from 0.67 to 0.66, which is relatively minor. So number.
And square meters?
Sorry?
What's that expressed in square meters?
Oh, square meter is, just give me a minute. It will be. Six. It will be 227.3 square meters. And that is all.
So you're eliminating variance number two under the new bylaw, you're amending variance number three under the new bylaw, 2.66 times the area.
Mm-hmm.
227.03 square meters.
Correct.
And you're eliminating variance number four under the old bylaw. Is that, that's all?
And we're also amending variance number one under the old bylaw.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, so that'll be the same as three. Okay. So are, did you resolve all issues?
No, no.
Neighbors, no?
No.
Okay, so tell us what issues you didn't resolve, and please address them.
Okay, the issues that the neighbor had was the total FSI of the house, which is being amended to 0.66 right now. And I've checked with the owner of the property, I called them, and they are willing to go ahead as of submitted. They're not willing to lower it because they think it's fairly reasonable in the area.
What is the current size?
Well, the current size, well, the current size is 0.26, but it's a one-story.
Right, so you're topping up and going back?
We're just pretty much topping up because in terms of building area, we're just increasing it by 14 square meter.
Yeah, that's, you're right.
Yeah.
Welcome 2.04, which is permitted, to 2.27, so you're adding 23 square meters.
That's right.
To the allowable.
Correct.
Three meters over, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's hear from the neighbors.
Okay.
Respond.
Spokesperson? Do we have a spokesperson? Oh, okay, you do the.
Overhead?
Okay.
Overhead?
Okay.
Hi, my name is Daphne Brown. I live at 21 Linsmore, which is the property to the south of 23 Linsmore. And I wanted to just highlight that there are actually five properties that abut to the 23 Linsmore. There's, the photograph is, is something else, but there's actually three to the north that abut with the property line, one to the east, and then my property to the south. So I wanted to speak...
How many stories is your...
Mine's a two-story home. The original. Yeah. Most of them are original on the block, and that's part of what I wanted to speak to. I wanted to speak to, I know you have the four tests, but I wanted to speak to the character of, of Linsmore Crescent itself, because I don't know if you've had a chance to see it, and then I wanted to speak to the totality of the variances and how they're impacting light, views, spacing, privacy in the neighborhood. So as you see here, this is just a photograph to show the curve. So Linsmore Crescent has a, has a beautiful curve to it that goes up for two blocks. It's almost like it kind of winds along a creek that's, that's probably been buried below the street. So because of that, the homes were built staggered. So as you can kind of see there with 23 Linsmore, it's more west by several feet, by at least 10 feet, and sorry, I talk in feet, not metric, because I grew up with it. So 21 Linsmore, which is to the right of 23, is staggered back at least 10 feet east of where the front line of the properties are. And as you can see in the back, the same thing happens, where, next slide, you can see that the back of 21 Linsmore, which is to the left, is staggered further east back than the back of 21, 23 Linsmore. Not, so this is from the back, looking at the two properties. And that, that's a line, that's based on the character of Linsmore, that it has a winding curve to it. So essentially, with the, with the rear addition, they're proposing to come not only as far back as 21 Linsmore is, but also even, even further back with the, with the deck and everything. So that's my really rough sketch, using a tool I didn't know how to use. But essentially, I mean, I know they said with the variance today, they were willing to go to reduce the depth by one foot, so this is pretty close to what would happen. So not only does the, the east back line of a house come further east than 21 Linsmore does today, but you add on that back deck, which is almost four feet high, it would be coming even further east into, along the side of the garden, and...
Where's the deck on the first floor or the second floor?
They're proposing it on the first floor.
Right.
Is that correct? And I wanted to point out one more thing on the previous slide, sorry, because you can kind of, you can kind of see it here, but not really. The part, when I looked at the variances, and I looked at the variance with respect to the driveway, I think they're going to 2.1 meters wide. The garage is, I know you can't see it here, but the garage is a little bit further to the, to the end of the property. And Victor used to have his car parked there, and he would back out into the backyard, his own backyard, in order to get through the driveway. It's pretty narrow.
Sorry, it was Victor?
Victor, sorry, was the previous owner. He lived there for the 18 years I was there, yeah. And so because they're coming back so far, I'm really questioning whether or not it is going to remain accessible parking. I'd like to have them answered to that question, and if, if it's not, then they're going to, well, either undervalue the property by not having an accessible parking spot, and by not having, you know, by taking up spots on the street potentially. The other view I wanted to show you, just to continue on the character of Linsmore, this is from the, this is looking south from the 15 Wolverley, so this is one of the three properties to the north, and you can see 23 Linsmore there. And then here again is my illustration of what, what they would be looking at with the building.
So this is from the other, from the rear neighbor?
Yeah.
Rear neighbor's yard, taking the photo?
Yeah, yeah.
Lot these, the side lot, the one on...
It's to the north. Yeah, to the north.
Right.
So it's actually, because of the way it curves and everything, it's, I just wanted to point out, it's very unique in terms of how the street is laid out. And then if you change the slide, Brian, thanks. That's, again, my illustration of what, it's, it's the rear addition, right, that really comes back several meters into, into the adjacent properties, and the windows that they're proposing for privacy. So the, the last thing I wanted to talk about was just that there are, there are, within that one block, there are four bungalows of the original homes. On Linsmore Crescent itself, I think there's like at least seven or eight, they're large bungalows. They're not the small ones that are kind of north of Cosburn Avenue, if you're familiar. These are large. And so my concern is also, okay, you know, we, what is the precedence that we're setting today with respect to these bungalows? Because they all have a potential to, to this, to come to this. And then the last...
Lots of two-story dwellings on the street and in the area?
Yeah, on that particular block, there's a combination, on that block, one, two, three, four. On that, on that east side, there are four, two stories, and there are four bungalows on that, just on that block, but...
Linsmore?
Yeah, on Linsmore.
Yours is a two-story.
Yes, mine's a two-story.
One of the problems that I see from what you're saying is the fact that the houses are all staggered because of the curb. If that, if all the houses were lined up and they wanted to do a two-story, a second-story addition, and they, now they're not exceeding the as-of-right length of the building, then you, you would not have a problem with the, if, if the houses were all lined up together?
I have a problem with the 0.66 that they're, that they're, the addition in the back.
But as of right, it's, they have 0.6, so I mean, they're not, we're not talking about a whole bunch of...
Talking about an extra 11 and a half meters approximately on each floor for the total about, from 227 to 204 permitted?
23.
23, so we're 11 and a half, 12 and a half square meters on either floor. There's no height variance, there's no, I assume the side yards, they're building in line with the existing house?
Well, okay, so that's a question that I had, and I tried to get resolved with the city from the bylaw, because the bylaw I read said the side lot line was 0.9 meters, which would have the new build at the back 0.9 meters away from my house. So just look at my sunroom, there's nothing there, right? This is looking north from my sunroom on the second floor. And currently now with those variances, I would have basically, oh, a wall, where's my, there it is, okay. I would basically have a wall there, and that's because of those variances with them being able to come back so far and so close to me, that I would basically be losing a lot of light and losing that.
He's entitled to go that far back as of right. He's now taken off to 0.07, he's building only to 17-meter depth?
But that's a foot.
A foot less than what he wanted, but he's, but he's, he's allowed to build 17 meters. He's eliminated that variance. He's taken out the variance.
Fine, but why is he allowed to come to 0.5 meters of the property line as opposed to 0.9?
Because he already is at 0.5.
He's not, not, not with the part that he's tearing down. He's tearing, he's, he's tearing down and adding to, he's tearing down an existing single floor at the back of the bungalow, and it's, it's, oh, it's more than 0.9 meters away from my house right now.
But the rest of the house is 0.5 meters from the lock lines.
Right, so...
Pardon? All right, eight minutes, over the five-minute limit?
Okay.
Sorry?
Could you wrap up? We're over time already, if you can just wrap up your comments. Each speaker has five minutes, we're at almost nine.
Right, okay. So basically, what we're trying to, what we're saying is that, no, that's okay, Brian. The point, the, the number of variance, so there's seven variances now, or I don't know how many, you reduced the seven meters, but essentially, it's going to result in something that's too big, too overshadowing, lots of loss of light. I'm not sure where the front porch is included in some of the calculations. I'm not sure where the back deck is included in the calculations. We're going to lose grounds, green space, and I think that this is a significant, and so do all the neighbors.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in opposition, wants to speak? Okay, Mr. Wong?
So I'm just going to address the, some of the questions that the neighbor raised. From the top of my head, based on what you just discussed, the driveway is an existing condition. The width of the driveway, it's a, it's a, it's a technical variance. The driveway is there already, so there's nothing, I mean, I really can do without knocking the house down. There's a right-of-way, and I'm not encroaching on the right-of-way. There's also a little circle at the end of the right-of-way, I don't know if you can see it, it's dotted. That's, that's the turning radius, based on what the city bylaw stated.
So were you able to get your car in, or your car?
Correct, yeah, yeah. So we're not encroaching on, on the, the turning radius at all, so that's about the driveway. And with regards to the comment about the size, I mean, the, the building depth, as you know, is already shrunk, so I'm building as of right. The only thing I could just add to, just to rebut, is if you... If you look at, there's a very light dotted line right there, this is the existing one-story portion of the house that I am not, yeah. And the neighbor's right, it's right now a little further in, more than 0.9 meter. But the, in terms of the, the actual massing, I'm just going further, probably by about two meters or so, so it's not significant. And in terms of building depth, I am meeting the bylaw right now. In terms of height, I'm not asking for any variances. And as far as the side setback is concerned, I mean, the committee was already mentioned, I am, my house is there already, and I'm just building in line with the existing house. So that's the other comments I have.
So Mr. Wong, I should have asked the neighbor, but this wasn't, is this where her studio is? Or is this where, you know, the studio windows you showed?
Yeah, it's the whole thing.
This, this area here?
Yeah.
So where's the windows, face this way or is it face...
Both.
Both. Okay, but there's a substantial distance between the lock line and, and their property, their house, and your, your studio.
That's where my studio is set back?
Yes.
From the property.
Yeah, yeah, so there's a substantial distance there.
It's not substantial.
Okay, not substantial. Okay. But it's, there's a distance there.
There's more distance today? If they were to build on where...
No, I understand, I understand your point, that they're building less than the previous construction. Anything else, Mr. Wong?
No.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Wong? Do we have a motion? Now, we've, we've heard from you, thank you. We're now in committee. No further...
I'm prepared to, if anyone has any other questions, I'm prepared to make a motion on this. I think that, as the chair rightly pointed out, the curvature of the, of the street is, is the reason that there is somewhat of an impact. They only, and, and the existing situation is a one-story, and they're building a second story, which is within their right to do so. There's no height variance. The GFA, or the floor space index, rather, is over by, you know, 11 and a half meters approximately on each of the two floors. And I think it's, it meets the tests under the Planning Act. I believe that although there is a, some impact on the, on the next-door neighbor due to the, they are building along the existing property line where it is now in terms of the existing setback, and I believe it's good planning, and I would move approval of the application.
Do you have a second, there?
As amended, my call? Yeah, yes, as amended, of course. Yes, based on the, the elimination of the variance and the reduction of the other variance that you went through, Mr. Wong went through in his presentation.
Do you have a second, there?
I would second the motion. I appreciate the neighbor's concerns, and it's a tough balance sometimes in this committee to, to come to a conclusion, but on balance, you know, we, we gleach application and merits, and we're looking mostly at these, these variances, and they are minor enough, and I think appropriate enough for the area, that I, I also move approval.
All in favor? Have your approval.
Thank you.
Okay, that's number 12. Next one is number 20, 1364 Queen Street East. Purpose of this application is to convert the, oh, is there opposition to this?
No, they were just late.
You were, yeah.
Right here.
Okay. All right. Oh, there is opposition? Would you come sit up here?
The Queen Street?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was just they weren't here.
They weren't, but nobody was here.
The applicant or the, everyone was late.
Yeah.
You called.
Okay. All right, have you had an opportunity to speak to this lady about her application? We have another application that we are going to hear, and we usually ask if there's opposition for you to go outside and speak and see if you can resolve some of your issues. So I suggest that we hold yours down till we deal with number 23, and we'll come back to you when we finish with 23. In the meantime, maybe you can resolve some of your issues.
Okay.
Thank you. Number 23, 59 Standish Avenue. The purpose of this application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with an integral garage. And before us, we have material submitted by the applicant, a correspondence and concern from 61 Standish, in opposition from the North Rosedale Residents Association and 50 Standish. Okay, so you've, your name, sir?
My name is Konstantin Polyzois.
And, and you've had an opportunity to speak to these gentlemen?
Yes, we spoke outside, and we've discussed their concerns and addressed their concerns, and I'm prepared to speak to that specifically as well.
Okay, so perhaps you could tell us what, if anything, has been resolved, and what's still outstanding?
So I can start with the concerns presented in the letters that we received. So beginning, there was a concern with the floor height. There is an internal garage required at or above grade for the property that raises the floor height, and so this pertains specifically to the floor alone, but also relates to the rear deck. But before I get to that, we discussed the floor space index. The floor space index of the proposed development incorporates the permitted as-of-right performance standards of the proposed development, including the height, the massing, the scale, and the setbacks, except, say, for the north side yard setback. And the proposed FSI remains lesser than many approved minor variances to increase the permitted maximum floor space index for properties immediately surrounding the subject property. Specifically, though, the north side yard setback, we discussed their concern and the...
Which variance is that?
The north side yard setback or the floor space index?
North side yard setback.
So the north side yard setback is item number...
Is that number two under the old bylaw?
Pardon me, just reading through, it's number five under the former Toronto zoning bylaw.
You're reading through numbers we don't have? Are you reading off?
We don't have a number five under the old bylaw. Number two variance under the old bylaw talks about the minimum required side lots line setback on the north side lot, side lot line, 0.71 meters, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, that's number two of the new, of the old, under the old bylaw.
Okay, so we discussed this, and the proposed development improves the existing building setback. I have something that I can show on the projector to illustrate.
So on the north side here...
So on the north side here, the dotted line represents the existing building footprint, and then the dark old line represents the proposed development footprint. So the proposed development does improve the setback from the current existing built form. We also discussed the building depth, the south side yard setback, building height, and the front yard setback. No minor variances are being requested for these, as the proposed development for these standards are permitted as of right. The two concerns that we discussed at length include the height of the rear deck, as well as the mutual driveway. So I'll begin with the mutual driveway. This is, this will be maintained for access by the neighbors to the south, but that the materials, the intention is to upgrade the material surface of the mutual drive. But the setback, as you can see in the projected image, will be maintained from the current position, so no impediment is anticipated to stop vehicle traffic from accessing the mutual drive.
There's no variance with respect to the mutual drive?
No, that is correct.
Is that where the parking is going to be for the, for the property?
Not for the proposed development. The mutual drive ex...
Is it the garage?
Yeah, the internal garage.
Right, but for the neighbor it will be?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we just also discussed at length the rear deck height. So this provision comes, is the result of the internal garage that rise, that raises the height of the first floor, and also the rear deck access from the first floor. And the provision limits the height of the rear deck where it projects into the rear yard. So the deck itself does not project into the rear yard. It's only the landing, the top landing of the staircase, the portion of the stairs that is above 1.2 meters in height. And we've addressed this concern with the neighbors to remove this minor variance and basically shorten the width or length of the deck, so that what is proposed instead is permitted as of right.
So that's variance number four under the old bylaw, the front deck. The front deck will have a height of 1.58 meters above grade, and the rear platform will have a height of 2.07 meters above grade. So are you eliminating that portion relating to the rear platform?
Yes, that is correct.
Can I clarify one thing you said when you started? You, some of these conditions result from the internal garage, and your first statement was the required internal garage. I just want to clarify, there is no requirement for you to have an internal garage?
So under the site-specific zoning, under the current zoning bylaw, the parking must be internal to the property? I can read the...
It must be internal, but there's nothing about the parking beyond the front base of law, like often you see that?
You could, you could still, you have a garage at the present time on the property. You could still use that if you wanted to. I just wanted to clarify who is telling you that you had to have an internal garage, because I am not aware of a requirement that says that.
I have here the parking location requirements under both the former zoning bylaw and the current zoning bylaw. So under the exception for the current zoning bylaw, it reads, required parking spaces for a dwelling unit must be located within a building or structure. So we propose the internal garage and access from the front. And this, and the grade relates to both the former zoning bylaw and the current zoning bylaw, where the former zoning bylaw reads that the floor level of the garage is not permitted if the, it is located below grade. And then the current zoning bylaw reads that the, where an individual private driveway leads directly to the dwelling unit, the elevation of the lowest point of a vehicle entrance in the main wall of the building must be higher than the elevation of the central line of the driveway at the point where it intersects the street. So creating an internal garageway at or above grade meets both of these conditions.
That's one solution. The other alternative could, to meet those conditions, would be to still use the garage that you have on the property. You could have a separate, as long as you were parking within a building, that appears to comply with the condition.
I believe that would be correct, but the, the interpretation that, under the exception...
Because otherwise, your neighbor is in violation of the bylaw, of the existing condition, because they're going to be using the right-of-way.
They can use the right-of-way and then access their rear yard parking as well.
So that presumably is an acceptable solution for you as well?
Yes, so we've discussed the mutual driveway with the neighbor to the south, and that this mutual driver will be maintained for their purposes, so that they can access their driving, their parking, sorry.
And the fact that you're going back and adding a walkout and stuff is not going to impact their ability to access their parking?
Could you specify which walkout?
Well, I'm just noticing you're, you're building your addition back, and I see you're not building on the right-of-way, mutual drive.
Yes.
Just wondering if it's going, and there's a, it looks like, is that a basement walkout? It's so tiny, but it looks like there's a basement walkout.
The basement wa...
I'm wondering, because you're asking for a variance to be closer to the lot line, and you're putting this, you know...
Not on the south side, sorry. No variance is being sought to reduce the setback for the south side.
But that's not going to impact your, your neighbor's ability to access their garage, or their parking?
The mutual driveway will be maintained, so that access is not impeded.
Are you going to use the garage at the back of your property?
No.
It's, the garage had been destroyed by essentially what would be under, considered in the zoning, an act of God, so that there is no garage currently. It's just a parking pad that will be removed and replaced with soft landscaping. And then the, we discussed with the neighbors that this would not impede their ability to reconstruct their rear yard garage at any time.
Okay, so is there any other points you want to make? We're long past your time, but you could wind up if there's anything else you want to...
I discussed all the concerns that we just addressed with the neighbors. I can speak to the proposal in general, if that's something that would be helpful for the committee.
Well, let's, let's hear from the neighbors and then we'll come back.
Can I just clarify, the variances that we have before us are still what you're requesting with the exception of variance number four to the old bylaw, and we're removing a section that deals with the platform. Is that the only change?
Yes, as, as relates to the requested minor variances, yes. The mutual driveway is not related to...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm the neighbor, Ted Nation, the neighbor to the north, 61 Standish. And our, the two issues, maybe we'll start with the second one first and the first one second. Regarding the deck, we had a conversation regarding that deck. Now, the fact that he's taken the variance out, does that mean that the height of the deck won't exceed 1.2 meters?
That's correct. He has to comply with the, he has to either eliminate the deck or comply with the bylaw.
That's acceptable, so...
Yeah.
That's acceptable to us, because our issue, as you can see from the drawing there, is we have a patio directly behind our property that would be a, you know, a two-and-a-half meter deck would obviously, you know, look right into, we would lose total privacy.
I mean, it's going to be short, lower.
It's going to be lower, okay. It's going to be no, no higher than 1.2 meters?
That's correct.
Okay, great. So our second issue is the density of the property, and I was under the impression that it was required that they have an internal garage, but listening to the committee now, apparently that is not so. So it would be certainly preferable to us to reduce the density of the property and either lower or shorten it, because although its height is within the bylaw and its depth is within the bylaw, you can see from this diagram that the shadow impact is going to be significant on our area, and they haven't done a shadow impact study. So we would be pretty much in darkness to the rear of the house and in our patio area off the, off the back of the house. So...
Is the garage included in the floor space area?
It is. So if they rebuilt their garage at the rear of the property, that would presumably allow them to have the same, they would be able to reduce the density within the bylaw to comply with the bylaw.
Right, thank you.
Those are my two points.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Redicop. I'm here on behalf of my in-laws, Jackman and Peter Wong, who live at 57 Standish Avenue, which is immediately south of the proposed structure. As the owners' representatives have said, we met outside and it was very fruitful. One of the things we did want to ensure is that what is currently designated as hard landscaping on the mutual driveway will in fact be suitable for parking a car and for driving up and down the driveway. It is going to be a hard surface. The other issue that one of the Kundie members already alluded to has to do with what used to be the garage structure. As was mentioned earlier, there was a existing structure there that actually straddled both properties, and there was a dividing segment within the garage that would allow parking for, for both properties, and it was unfortunately destroyed by a fallen tree branch in the last year or two. And my in-laws would like to ensure that whatever is built with the new structure would not inhibit them from rebuilding their portion of the garage up to the existing property line. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wong?
This portion of the garage also was impacted by that fallen branch? So they don't have a currently...
That, that is correct. The, the falling branch completely destroyed the roof of the garage, and the, and the garage had to be demolished. So currently, there is a concrete pad there where the garage foundation used to be, and that's all that's there now.
So it was a semi-detached garage?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Madam Secretary Treasurer, I guess if they came back to build one, would they be able to build it on the lot line? The people at 57?
The garage.
The garage. If they were to rebuild their half of the garage and the applicant does not build a garage, would they have to then comply with the side yard setback for that garage? Seems like a logical place to put it, but they might have to make an application.
Mr.? No. Polizos? I don't know why I said...
So, sir, can you address the floor space index and garage? I, you know, and, and the issue of shadow, et cetera?
So I'll start with the floor space index. There's a question of whether or not the internal garage contributes to the gross floor area. Just to clarify that, under the former zoning bylaw, it does contribute to the gross floor area, but under the current zoning bylaw, it does not. So this constitutes the difference between the minor variances requesting FSI between both zoning bylaws.
Okay, so that's why the variance number one under the old bylaw is 0.8, whereas under the new bylaw it's 0.75, because the garage is not included under the new bylaw?
That is correct.
So that wouldn't help, Mr. Nation?
It's, has been carefully considered with the built form as it, you know, we treat both zoning bylaws and considering the fact that it does constitute GFA, we've had to be very sort of careful with how it has been designed.
So your client, I assume, wants to continue with the integral garage?
Yes, that is correct. The intention is to remove the parking pad from the rear and have it be soft landscaping.
Okay. Are there other issues?
There's the question of the rear deck height. So the zoning bylaw only limits the height where it does not, or only limits height where it projects into the rear yard. So the permitted height, the height is permitted as of right where it does not project into the required yard. Our client is willing to shorten the length or width of the deck, but the height would have to remain the same as there is egress from the bottom floor.
Does that affect this gentleman's concern?
Yes.
Not understanding the fact you're recommending a change to the variance request. The deck would still stay higher. Do you understand this?
Well, that's, yeah, my, my understanding was that, that, I mean, my preference would be to follow the bylaw, 1.2 meters, that would be ideal.
Okay, but the, just to clarify, because I think this is understandably confusing. The 1.2 meters applies if you're not, if you're not within the rear yard setback. He, he's not within the rear yard setback, sorry, not within the rear yard setback, and therefore he can build higher than that. If he was in the rear yard setback, the 1.2 meters kicks in. So because of where, correct me if I'm wrong, because of where he's proposing to put the deck, that doesn't apply? Okay?
That is correct.
So I understand the reason you eliminated it from the variance, deleted it from the variance, is because you realize you didn't need that variance?
No, it's because the deck connects with the rear stairs that is attached to the deck, and the stairs is treated as a platform like the deck. So the portion that the minor variance applies to is the staircase attached to the rear deck. So the portion of the staircase that is above 1.2 meters, that's what the minor variance is related to. But our client is willing to change the length or width of the deck so that where it meets the staircase and where the height of the staircase in the rear yard is above 1.2 meters, so that that would be permitted as of right, and that the concerns for privacy are addressed. So for example, if you were to, I can show you.
Yeah, you better show us. You got me confused.
I think he's just gonna, the deck is gonna stay where it is. It's just gonna get smaller.
He's gonna change the stair.
Yeah.
So for example, if the width of the deck from the north side is shortened, you would achieve a, this corner of the proposed building would block the line of sight into the neighboring property's rear yard.
So that was the concern that, that we discussed. The height, though, within the rear, outside of the rear yard is permitted, though, as of right.
So just to make it simpler from my understanding, can you just show me what you're taking off, so that the deck complies?
So I can...
Like, so we all are on the same page about what is going to be left, in terms of the deck?
So it would be the stair, the height of the stairs?
Yes, I understand that. That's all coming off?
And so that would just need to be, like, where it is inside of the rear yard? Would have to be...
Or there'll be a step down or something like...
Some sort of step down, and then altering maybe an inlet of the deck, so that you can step into it, so that at no point does a platform in the rear yard exceed the 1.2 meter.
I'll answer the...
In simple terms, the deck's gonna stay the same. This is going to be smaller, and in order to accommodate that, you might have to insert stairways in there.
Yes, but we may alter, like, the other components to make sure that, for example, like, line of sight is protected between the neighboring properties.
Yeah, I think we agreed that, that you would cut the deck back, I don't know, a meter or so, so that the line of sight from here into my backyard is protected. What guarantee do I have of that? Nothing.
Okay, I understood you to say that you weren't going to change the deck. You're saying your understanding is that you're going to make the deck smaller?
Well, we talked about outside.
So what, tell us what you're gonna do.
I probably said it's gonna make the deck smaller.
So we're going to, we'd like to request that the minor variance, this portion dealing with the rear yard deck projection be removed, and that a rear deck that meets the provisions of the zoning is proposed as of right. And so this would be addressed with shortening, so the reason you have to shorten the, the width of the deck, not the height, is because of where the stairs leads out, so that it doesn't conflict with the basement walkout. So it might be an issue with building code, egress and ingress. So if... might be an issue with building code, egress and ingress. So it's not, it may not entirely be solved by simply adding sort of a step within the deck so that the platform is lower, but we may need to sort of like reconfigure the deck so that the provisions of the zoning bylaw are met, but that the...
Your proposal is not, as the neighbor understands it, your proposal is not to reduce, automatically to reduce this distance. You're not proposing to cut the deck like that, or are you?
The client is open to that. I think that the idea was to work with the neighbor to see what would be agreeable to them. So it might mean, it could be shortening the width or the length of the deck, but as long as the line of sight is protected, I think that we have addressed their concerns.
Okay, so in other words, in other words, you have a vague plan to comply with the bylaw, and that's what you're going to be required to do, but you're not sure exactly how you're going to do it?
There's no guarantee to the neighbor.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion, sir? I was just talking to the client. I'm the architect.
No, no, he's the architect for the project.
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
We'd like to increase the north setback to a deck of 1.2 meters.
Okay, so the idea would be to increase the setback on the north side of the deck to 1.2 meters? I believe from .71 meters.
Okay, so that's variance number two under the old bylaw will be located 1.2 meters? So that, so, so the variance number two can be eliminated because the variance has to be nine meters, .9 meters?
The setback only applies to the building. The rear deck is permitted up to, I believe, .3 meters into the side lot line. So the same setback requirement that applies to the building does not apply to...
The deck.
To the deck.
Making addition.
Right.
All right. Can you wrap up now?
Yes.
Have you wrapped up?
Um, I believe I've, I can speak generally to the proposed development, but...
No, you're only here to rebut or to address the issues raised by the neighbors.
So I believe I've addressed their concerns that relate to the rear deck and the mutual drive, and as well as the concerns raised in the, in the letter, many of which concerns were raised, but the proposed development is permitted as of right in those aspects.
Take it with respect to the deck. In order to satisfy the bylaw and to satisfy Mr. Nation, you, you have to revise your plans.
Yes, that would be correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion? I'm prepared to refuse a motion, refuse a program on the basis. They gotta make some changes, plans, et cetera, and they should all...
I think it's a good application.
Yeah.
have before us is a little bit incomplete and should have been brought to us in the complete state, and there's no way to guarantee in an easy way the requirement on the deck to the neighbor. And some of these variances, in my opinion, are kind of borderline in the minor side of it, so my motion is that we refuse the application.
Have a second here?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Application is refused. Thank you.
Go back to number 20, 1364 Queen Street East.
Can I ask my name?
Yes, ma'am. The purpose of this application is to convert the ground floor retail store of the existing mixed-use building into a restaurant with less than 30 seats and to install a new exterior door on the west side of the building. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, opposition from 1360 and 1362 Queen Street East. All right, your name, sir?
My name is Christopher Nayler. I'm the agent for the landowner, Nayler Architect.
Yes. Have you discussed the matter with the...
Yes, we, we've been outside and we've had a discussion. I think there was some misunderstanding in terms of what it is we're actually looking for and the way that the minor variances worded. The restaurant, what it asks for a restaurant to be converted to a restaurant of under 30 seats, that actually exists today. We did get, we did secure a building permit for that. It's KFC Restaurant on the east side of the building on the corner, and that's a shaded out portion of the site plan that we put in. So it's, that's, that's already there. So that doesn't, that's not part necessarily of this variance. What actually happened was we were retained by the tenant to do a set of plans and secure a building permit for the restaurant, which we did. Originally, there was a staircase at the back of the suite that accessed the basement, and the basement has common facilities, electric meters, gas meters, hot water tanks for the whole building. The landlord then subsequently, without anybody's knowledge, took that staircase out, reversed it, and put a door on the exterior of the building, which, if you look at the photograph on the left-hand side, the door that sat in the corner, that is the door that they put in. They did not secure any approvals for this, any permits. When we went onto site to do our, that's correct, that one. When we went on site to do our pre-construction, we noticed that this piece had changed around, and obviously that was a material impact on our drawings that were already in the city for a building permit. So we changed those drawings on our permit application and then submitted a permit application for the landlord to do that work. So it's get an approval after the fact. When that application went in, the zoning issue came up. We're not allowed openings to within X feet of the property line. The property line pretty much goes down the middle of that alleyway that you can see. So we're here today to ask, in hindsight, for the landlord approval for the door that's already there.
So you're representing the landlord?
In this situation, yes.
But do you, or the...
We were originally...
For the KFC, the tenant?
For the KFC. We were, we were the original architect for that, and the landlord just said, "Look, you're already doing the work. You've already got a bunch of drawings set up. We need to, we need to obviously do this. We need to fix it."
So what, what issue did the neighbor raise, and is it resolved?
The neighbor, number one, wanted to make sure that it wasn't the whole of the ground floor that was being converted to a restaurant, that it is just the one, the KFC.
So in other words, the existing, she wanted to be sure the existing situation...
Is status quo.
What it is that...
Yeah. Any, any, I mean, if, if the landlord wants to come back and apply for another restaurant in there, that'll be a subject of another application, another approval process, which we won't be part of.
Can you clarify what the purpose of the application should say, then?
It's literally to permit that side door. That's, that's where the zoning infraction is. We're not allowed to put an opening in the sidewall of a building and a...
Okay, so, and it's not a new exterior door, it's existing?
It's existing today, but it doesn't have approval.
Okay, but it's still existing. So the purpose of the application is to allow you to retain, retain an existing exterior door?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're saying what exactly we're doing.
Yeah. It was new-built about eight months, but it is there today. Yes, it is.
And the purpose of the door is just to gain access to the utilities in the basement?
It's just to gain access to the basement only, and it's just...
Not like for the restaurant use?
Nope. It's access to the basement only, and it's just to access the common facilities for meter reading, hot water, those kind of things.
Not a door in and out of the rest, obviously?
No.
No, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Nayler. Neighbors, do you have any existing concerns? Do you want to come up?
Give us your name, please.
Hi, my name is Helen Shukas, and I'm representing 1360 and 1362 Queen Street on behalf of Mary Manikas and Paul Manikas. We are here today because we did not clearly understand the proposal. They had, it said that it was another restaurant, and currently there is a tenant that is living in that section back here. Right in there. You can see...
So there's a door there, too?
Yeah, there's a door. So there's another door there, which I guess causes another problem, and we'll deal with that with filing something to determine if that was actually approved as well. Our issue is that we, based on the application, it looked like there was a third door going in. So this black one, the one that they put in that they're asking for approval today, seeing that application come in, it, to us, made us believe that there was now a third door that they were putting in, which led to a number of issues: grading issues, water issues, safety issues, depending on if it's going to be...
The only, the only doors there are this black door and the one that Mr. Nayler was referring to leading to the basement.
Right. So this one probably does not have an approval since the other one doesn't. So we are here today, I guess, to, for, I mean, he did it backwards. He should not have put in that door. He should have gotten an approval first before putting in a door going into the basement. But we don't have an issue with the door that we're discussing today because it's setback and it's going into the basement. We would have had an issue if it was a third door, because then that would lead to more traffic, et cetera, and other issues. But we, we definitely have, now we need to address why there's a door, a window. It just seems like things keep popping up without any approval, and there's a process. We all have to follow it. We do it, and I expect them to follow it. So that's why you guys are here. That's why we take this time to come down here. So we, we will just confirm with, with the city if that actually was approved, and if it's not, then we'll have to go down that path as well.
But you have no objection to the door leading to the basement?
So, as long as, I don't have an objection, as long as you clarify in there that it is an existing door and the KFC is what they're referring to, so that another restaurant doesn't show up. We're not in approval with another restaurant and another door. But if you can confirm that it...
Another restaurant, however, could go to the same space.
Because...
You're concerned if there's an additional restaurant?
Yes.
So more space going to restaurant use?
Yes, yes. Yeah, as long as we can document that, then we are okay with, with what they've got currently.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nayler?
Chairman, members of the committee, I can certainly confirm that. It is the existing KFC Restaurant. It is the existing door.
Do you know if this door's approved?
I, no, I don't. But I've consulted and said, advised them to go to building standards and at least file an appeal or a complaint. So I'll show them...
Do you know what that door leads to?
I, to be honest, I don't. I wasn't involved in that part of the building. Like I say, I was...
Because we now know that the other door goes to the basement for mechanical common law.
Correct.
We heard somebody lives there, so, yeah, it's an apartment. Okay, so what, what I understand we have to do is change the purpose of the application to say to legalize and maintain an exterior door on the west side of the building?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. So any, so we have to make a motion to that effect and a motion to approve the variance if, if somebody wants to make that motion. So thank you, Mr. Nayler.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to, to make that motion to approve the application as, as restated. Again, it's an extremely minor application and clearly meets the test for variance, and the other issue we'll have to deal with if, if and when it comes back.
But your motion includes changing the purpose of the application to what I said?
Yes, to the, to the reworded.
Because I can understand why...
Absolutely.
The neighbor came here to complain. All right, is there a second or to the motion?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Can you spell your last name? Your last, your surname?
So we're just...
Well, I think so.
Yep.
Yes.
Jurgen.